To open the meeting, if you can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hearing the citizens, if we have anybody that would like to speak for three minutes. Not seeing anybody, we'll move on. We're going to do the 2016-2017 Student Data Oviel as Paulit Zaborski.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Fledo had asked me to do a quick overview of our data. At a later date, we'll get in more depth with some of our information that has been recently released. So let's get started. We're going to start by looking at achievement data and specifically our Keystone results for Algebra I. What I provided for you was a chart just at the top so you can see how many students were in each of our categories and then our percent at or above proficiency. And then I also provided you with the number of students that achieved that. At the bottom, you will be able to see those categories again, but for those people that are more visual, as I am, I like to see the bar graph and I'm able to see how many students were actually proficient. And this is the last three years' data, so you have something to compare it to. The dark blue obviously represents our advanced and our green proficient. With Algebra I, this does contain our seventh and eighth grade students as well, so we have to keep that in mind as we look at these results. So this is our Algebra I Keystone. I wanted to give you an idea of last year's data to this year's data for each one of our schools, just to give you kind of an idea of who increased and who might have slipped a little from last year. As you can see, once again, I said there were seventh and eighth grade data included as well. Two of our schools have reached 100% proficiency. That means they're either proficient or advanced, and that was Connell and Harding this past year. But each one of our schools is listed. I know it's kind of small, but it does give you an idea of what each school's achievement was from the 26th year to the 27th, or 2017 school year. That gives you an idea of what's happening with Algebra I. In looking at Biology Keystone, once again, I have the same kind of look for you to give you an idea of our students who were proficient or above proficiency within our district this past spring. We're at a 33.2%. In comparison to previous years, you'll be able to see that our percent proficient has increased, starting with the 2015 school year. And once again, here's our schools. Now, now we don't have those seventh and eighth graders because they don't take Biology at that young age, but you'll be able to see who, once again, we had two schools that increased their scores and we had two schools that did decrease from the 2016 school year. And it just gives you an idea of how each school did this past year. So now we go to Literature. Once again, I kind of followed the same pattern so that you were able to easily see how our schools are doing. Once again, we're pretty stable with some of our scores, but you can see once again that we kind of, we did okay and then we slipped a little in 2016 and then we went back up in 2017. But they're very similar to one another. So then when we look at our Literature scores, once again, you can see we had an increase in two of our schools and a decrease in two of our schools. We kind of want to point out Central. We know that they increased their scores by 20% from the previous year, so we have to figure out, you know, what special items they used last year so that we can replicate that and continue to increase those scores.
Bee, that was initiative they put in place last year, wasn't it?
Yes. Pam McCosky, part of her school improvement goal was to look at text-dependent questions and she spent most of her professional development working with all of her staff on that and that's an example of looking at a school improvement and seeing the increase. So kudos to Pam and her staff there.
And now looking at our younger students, our third through eighth grade students, we're going to take a peek at our English Language Arts. I once again provided you with three years of data and then I also have this state result down so that you can compare how we did versus the state as well. So you can, what you're going to find through our younger kids that our scores are kind of remaining the same and it just gives us an idea, if there's an increase or a decrease, it has been very slight for the past three years. So this gives us an idea of where we are in the 2017 school year.
And again, one of our goals for primary is looking at literacy. So primary literacy is one of the things that we currently are looking at as a district.
So I know this is very, we have many schools and when we get more in-depth into some of the scores, I just wanted to give you an idea of that 2016 versus 2017 data compared to, with all of our schools and giving you an idea of the schools that increased their scores and the schools that did not increase their scores from this past year. As we, as we take a look at this information, we want to continue finding out the positives within our trends and making sure that we're replicating that information so that we can cross it to the other, or make sure that our other schools are trying some of those initiatives as well. And I know that's a kind of a large report, so I'm just taking a minute so that you're able to take a look. So we did have seven schools that did increase their scores from 2016. In looking at mathematics, once again, you're going to see that from 2015, we did increase in 2016, but then we, it was a very slight decrease back to 2017 again. And those scores are, they're very close to one another for the last three years. And then once again, here's all of our schools and how each one did compared to the previous year. Once again, we had seven schools increase from last year and sometimes those are just a small increase, so that gives you kind of an idea of each one of our schools and I'll just let you take a minute to take a look at that. And then looking at our Science scores from this past spring, we can see that we've had a slight decrease, decrease from 2015 in our proficient and advanced students. And as I said before, it's very similar, the scores are very similar from the 2016 to the 2017 school year. These scores, by the way, only contain fourth and eighth grade students because those are the students that we test, just to give you an idea. So when we take a look at these results, all, obviously, our elementary schools and our K eights would only contain fourth and eighth grade students, fourth and/or eighth grade students, so you can see. So this, with Science, we had six schools that did increase their scores from the previous As you're going along, and I tried to keep it color-coded so it made it a little easier for you to be able to see those. This gives us an idea of our achievement data, but we also want to look at growth. P-VAS is our, is how we measure growth and this is much more promising, telling us that our students are growing. So I'm going to just explain quickly how we read this report. This is what we call the District Lodge Pad and I just kind of wanted to give you an overview. There's actually two different reports here. When we look at the rectangles at the top, you're going to see the first square of each one says 2017 and the second square will say three-year average. The P-VAS system is based on color coding. So if we see green, that means a group of students came into us and we maintain that group of students for that school year. So green means maintained and we've grown them a year, they've moved out a year. When we see light blue, that means those students have gained. When we see dark blue, we want to see lots of dark blue. That means we significantly grew those students. If we see yellow or red, that means that's an area of concern and those students have lost their growth. There's evidence that there is lot, growth that has been lost. So when we look at just the rectangles coming across, we can see we have our three subjects. We have green rectangles and we have dark blue and light blue. So what we're seeing is we maintained math, fourth grade, fifth grade math, but we grew significantly in sixth grade math and we also grew in seventh grade math and eighth grade math. The three-year average tells us how the students have done in the past. So we know that they've been dark blue in the past, we need to continue to grow those students. When we see red, this is an area of concern, so our Keystone Algebra I would be something that we need to make sure we continue to grow with and work with those students. So once again, with ELA, our fourth grade ELA would be an area of concern because we, the students did not grow. But with our fifth grade PSSA math, those students maintained and so did our sixth grade. With our seventh grade PSSA for ELA, we see the dark blue, so they've, they've grown significantly. And then our eighth grade PSSA is a light blue, which means they have also gained. So, and then of course, our ELA Keystone is also an area of concern with red. When we look at our Science with our fourth grade, that's an area of concern, something that we need to dig into and we need to work on. With our eighth grade, we've got dark blue, so we've had significant growth. And then our Biology, we have red for our Keystone, so that's an area of concern. The second report you see and is called a Quintile Diagnostic. And this is where each one of our students, we're able to drill down into what student groups that we can help make sure that we're showing growth with. So Quintile I are some of our lower, lower students, our lowest students in the state of Pennsylvania. So the students that fall into Quintile I are students that have scored in the lowest 20th percentile. Quintile II would be the next 20th percentile, which would be between 20 and 40, and then 40 and 60, 60 and 80, and then 80 and 100. So all, when we look at the piece of pie, or the, the piece of pie, we can see where our students fell and then we can see by their colors if we grew those students for that year or if we did not. So blue is good, there's only three colors here. Green means we maintained and then red means it's an area of concern. So for today and tomorrow, we've actually been working with the state on training all of our principals on being able to dig down into each one of these groups because we can identify who the students are in each one of these groups and then work to make sure we're helping to improve those areas. So as you can see, within our math, we can see that within quintiles, for example, with our fourth grade, our quintiles four and five, green is good for four. That means that we've maintained those students. And we know that those are some of our higher students, so that means they've grown a full year. Our Quintile V, for example, for math, PSSA four, where we see a blue, that means they've grown. Areas of concern would be three and two because those are red. Does that make sense? I just want, I'm not going to, I'll let you. It is a little confusing, but it gives you an idea of what groups of students were actually growing within each subject and within each grade. So for example, here, we see that there's lots of growth in Quintile I. That means those students came to us probably at a lower level, but we've grown those students by the end of this school year, by the end of last year.
So Paulit, the blue means that we've grown them more than the average student in Pennsylvania, right?
Correct.
And green means we've grown them the same as an average student in Pennsylvania?
It would be we maintain them. So they came in to us at the level they are and they left us at that same level. So we grew them a year, it's a year's worth of growth.
So even if they came in being not proficient, we maintain that non-proficiency?
We've grown them the full year of what a student would come into us. It's a full year of growth.
So blue means we grew them a little further?
So somebody who's not proficient, they walk in the door, they're not proficient. And they went from, in this case, from red to green, that's a good sign. But if they were at not proficient, they remain not proficient, they stay green to green.
Green, green means we didn't, they didn't slide backwards.
Right.
Blue means they moved forwards more than, than most students.
But it kind of skews, in my mind, it's kind of skews perception because if they're, if they didn't know how to read in second grade, that means they still don't know how to read third grade.
Right.
Then, then how I read, is that correct?
So what you're reading with the ones are the lowest, lowest kids, we need to always be in the blue there to continue to try to move them, bench them up.
Right.
Is that, that's our?
Yes.
So if we see the ones, that means they're, they're growing beyond just a year's worth of growth and that's what we need to do. So whatever items we've put into place to help these students, it's working. So that means we need to continue that, but that's what, that's what that means. Does that make sense?
It's a lot to digest, Paulit.
Oh, definitely.
But do we know, can we attach valid reasons to why we did better in some and why we couldn't? Is it too?
So that's what we're, we're doing with the principals. So each one digs down into their, this is one report of the P-VAS system, there's many reports. And we start with the broad and we dig down deep and we try to figure out what's working and why is it working. So maybe somebody put in an intervention for our students that fall into Quintile I and so we know that that could probably be the case of why that group has grown. So that's what we're doing with each one of our schools individually. And it's a person with the state that has lots of knowledge of our whole P-VAS system. So they're able to help guide all of us and we're all involved with them, in those trainings.
Just to kind of give you an idea of where, where administrators are going, so our central office administrators have been trained in this as well. So all of our central office administrators are working side-by-side with the administrators from the 15 buildings. And our hope is that when they sit down with their teachers, that they, the teachers will be able to really look at the data that's, that's up here and then give us reasonings of why might this have been. They look at their past data, but the other neat thing about data is that they are giving us projections with the students they have in front of them. And they're going to look at them now, which means it's only November 1st and though it's November 1st, they have a whole year that they can work with the students and work with the deficits that they might have to get some high improvements and not have red, work towards green, but work towards the blue and light blue. The other thing that I would like to share is we have the data from our, all of our staff and our administrative team in central office has been going into the buildings to see what's going on, to see what's happening in some of the light blue and dark blue classrooms. What's happening? Why are we having light blue and dark blue and how can we replicate that and have more teachers being able to do that? We also are looking at curriculum and aligning our standards to make sure that what we're teaching does align with what we're supposed to be doing and what needs to be done for our students.
So just a quick, so this is a type of analysis of, of education that is relatively new to us at this point. And so that's what you're saying, is that this is, this is the beginning of that analysis and then we're going to utilize that analysis to go into the schools and address each situation as we're able to evaluate why we went to blue, why we're in the red. So that's what you're talking about.
Right.
Exactly.
And including achievement data as well. So we use growth data and achievement data.
So now the data that we would have, I mean, I mean, this is not a new, you know, I mean, everybody, we've, we've been gathering data for years and years.
Sure.
So this makes it different because it simplifies it in a situ, in a way that, that you can look at it and be able to talk to principals and teachers about it? Okay.
Yes.
And they've, they've really taken it to the, the level of a student and then that student, what can we do to support that student? So then the training, and we've been training for the past three years specifically on using this data to support the buildings and support the teachers and support the students.
So we're actually able to know which kids are falling? I mean, like in other words, you know, before it would be like a, an overview of like, in this school, some of the kids are falling, but we weren't able to completely identify that these were the students that were there. But so now that's what we're able to do and so we can.
Right.
And like she said, to go into the classes where we are improving and seeing whether it's a dynamic teacher, a dynamic lesson plan, whatever it is that has touched these kids and then be able to replicate it throughout the district.
Yep. That's exactly, exactly.
This is very valuable for a school district like ours that has such low achievement because we have, we have a lot of movement to do. So this really gives us a tool to identify what instructional practices and what programs are moving those kids into the blue, which is where we need to be if we're ever going to get caught up and move more kids to achieving.
So this type of evaluation, is this, is this new just to, just to the Erie School District or is this statewide that they're doing this?
Statewide.
Okay.
This is statewide, so.
I think it's my initial concern. When I look at it, the first thing that I see is all the red, because we really need to get rid of. And that represents, granted, it's not weighted by student population, but if there's 65 pieces of pie that are up there, 32% of those pieces of pie have decreased. It's a third of, can you start, can you start doing the numbers there? So 32.3% of a decrease, so that's, that's, that is the very tough.
We have a lot of work to do.
There's a lot of work to do.
When Paulit's done, we do have some more data as far as comparing us to the state and some of the peer school districts they'd like to share to kind of put some of this into perspective as far as what we're doing compared to some of the other mid-sized cities around, around the state.
And we'll be able to get a look at that?
Yes, as soon as Paulit's done.
Yes.
I'd be more interested in us taking that, this is beginning in grade four, yeah. You know, to me, you establish a baseline and your progression or digression is based on the baseline. To me, K 1, 2, 3 should establish a baseline of, again, what the progress is and their proficiencies are. Beginning in grade four, you've already lost, you know, K 1, 2, and 3, which is, you know, what, 25% of your education? So I think if we are to look to improve, you'd want to start right at the beginning to say, okay, here is where they were. Not to say that, you know, you're going to use that data for the rest of their lives, but at least it establishes your baseline in education and where that student or group progresses. And so in grade four, when they're tested for, whether it's pass or whatever benchmark, you're going to know whether or not our teachers, our principals, our schools are adequately progressing these students.
So to address that, the baseline for the state is third grade. However.
I understand that.
However, we, we are doing something very similar with our K 1 and 2 with a, an assessment called DIBELS and that's something we're digging into this year as well and making sure people are trained, making sure people understand the assessment and how to use the assessment, as you were saying, to make sure that we have that baseline for our students. So that is something we've, we've established and really working on this year.
We only have this data, this, all this data comes from the state, so it's all based on PSSAs.
Right. I understand, we should go a step beyond that.
And that's.
And begin at the beginning.
Yes.
Right. That's what the DIBELS do on Language Arts and then we're looking, again, we're, you know, we're talking about early literacy and changing that curriculum, we have to do some things with math. So as we start to, you know, look to the future, now that we can, you know, move beyond trying to keep the doors open every year, we can start to find those programs that we can use to really start developing that benchmark from K, K to 2 and make sure that it's aligned with what we're doing with PSSAs.
I do agree with what Tom, with Tom's analysis once regarding 32% digression. That's, that's worrisome. You know, that shows us where our focus needs to be in, in moving forward with those students. That's, that's disheartening. I thought we were progressing at a consistent clip and I'm not seeing that based on what I've seen there.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
This is something that I've been saying since the day I got on the school board. And Brian, when I first got on the school board, this was my main concern. I knew we had the financial concerns, but from day one, my concern was, was with our scores and with all of this. And now we, it circled back to this again because even beyond any financial situation, regardless of keeping the doors open or not, we cannot let that distract us from what's most important is educating the students. And that's not a political statement, that's a statement because my kids go to these schools too. So it's a real concern that I've had from day one is how are our kids doing for real in school beyond the, you know, we, we come to these meetings and we consistently talk about financial issues and we discuss contracts and we discuss this, that, and the other thing, but over and over again, my thing has been the education, the quality of the education that we are providing and also one of the big things that I had advocated for was the pre-K. And that's where actually we need to start with these kids because a lot of them need that training in pre-K to come into kindergarten prepared because a lot of students are not prepared for kindergarten. So I would say to go a step beyond just K through three is to start with the pre-K. And since we, since I've been on the board, we've added more pre-Ks into our buildings, directly into our buildings, and that's where we really have to start at, is in our pre-K. Because if they are coming into kindergarten and we have these, expectations have changed since we were in kindergarten to what they are doing in kindergarten now because I've sat in kindergarten classrooms and they're more on the first grade level where we was back in kindergarten, it was like pre-K. So I think I'm going to continue to advocate for us to start even earlier than kindergarten because there, a lot of kids do not have the skills that they even need. because there, a lot of kids do not have the skills that they even need for kindergarten. You know, they're learning to read and all of this in K. So, you know, this is something that, in particularly myself, have been concerned about over the last few years is that, you know, while we have our focus on one thing, and I'm glad that we fought for what we, you know, was able to get financially, what was going on with our children, what's going on with their quality of education, and what are we going to do to turn things around? Like Tom pointing out that percentage was like, kind of disheartening, because it's just like, we so focused on other things that we can't lose sight of what's most important as that this is not just a business. We actually educating students and preparing them to, you know, go out into the real world and how can they, you know, this is just in, this isn't, they haven't hit high school yet, so just imagine what the numbers is going to look like when they, they're coming out of middle school with these kind of numbers and then they go to high school and work's getting even harder and tests are getting even harder. You know, things are being more, things are more difficult. So, you know, I'm really interested in seeing, you know, what the strategic plan is for how to deal with...
You're setting up my presentation after.
Good. Let me just go ahead and do it for you, Brian. Well, I'm interested in hearing what you've got to say, Brian.
Good.
All right. So I just have one more slide, and this is from the school performance profiles that were just released. So within our, I put last year's versus this year's as a reference point for you. The school performance profile contains both that achievement data that we saw in the beginning, and it also contains that P-VAS, that growth data that I just showed you the slide on. So that you can see some of our schools increased, some of our schools decreased. We had approximately eight schools that increased. We know that some of these schools have closed. However, we still can use that information and learn from it to move on. So there's a whole explanation of where that number comes from, and I'm not going to go through it all today. However, it will give you an idea that we have both that achievement and growth data. The growth data that I showed you with the blue circles, that actually, that we did better on, that is only worth 40% of the SPP, whereas achievement data is worth 50%. And then we have a 10% of what they call other, which is usually attendance promotion rate or graduation rate. There's a whole formula that goes into this. And so this gives you an idea of where our schools were, where they are at this point.
Go ahead.
Paulette, I'm a red board member. Why did Wayne and Roosevelt have a higher number on the right and they read?
So there's, there's like a range for each...
They didn't go up high enough to get green?
That is correct. They didn't, and the next one is actually yellow.
And what does yellow mean? I don't recall yellow either.
Yellow is right below, or is right above red. So red is the bottom, then yellow, then green. Green is the middle. And then light blue, and then dark blue.
I was going to ask you to help me again understand the difference between growth and achievement. So is that it? If you don't achieve a high enough score, you're not going to change the color?
So... So growth measures a group of students and where they come from, from the beginning at two points in time. So from the beginning of the year to the end of this year, whereas achievement is individual, the easiest way to say it is achievement would be like individual scores such as Keystone and PSSA for our students.
77% of our polls are red.
So as we pointed out, there is work to do.
Can we take any comfort? Do we, how do we compare to comparable districts in size and...
You're going to see that in the presentation.
Right. I mean, I just want to point out, we do, we can move. So we definitely see Wilson, for example, moved into a new color. They went up 13 points. That's kind of our bright spot.
No further questions, Charlie.
Thank you.
I certainly don't want to make any excuses. You know, as we've all said tonight, we have a lot of work to do. Our scores are unacceptable and we need to start moving them forward, but I thought it would be good just to kind of put that into perspective before we, you know, before we get into what the 14 million and how that's going to affect and what our long-term plans are. We have spent the last eight to 10 years cutting. Every single year, we've had a 10, 8, $7 million deficit. People have been worried about their jobs. Last year especially, we talked about closing all the high schools. So people's focus for the last several years really have not been on student achievement. They've been on, you know, am I going to have my job next year? What's going to happen? You know, trying to keep the doors open again. And I don't use that as an excuse, but I feel it's an important part of this, this whole puzzle of where we're at. And because of all those cuts, we, we are, you know, on this slide, I know you're aware of this, we, we spend less than the state and county average. And, you know, over the last eight years, we've stripped a lot of supports out of our system that really helped some of those struggling kids, like after-school help, like the Title One programming where we used to have one-on-one instruction for, pull-out instruction for some of our kids that are struggling in reading and math. Those are all gone because we've had no, no option but to cut those in order to balance the budget. So, so just to keep that in perspective over the last couple of years, but the, when I look overall, I think there is a bright spot here, because if you look at our expenditures per student, and this goes back all the way to 2008, and this is a little different way to look at our cost per student. This is something, this is a program that we have access to through the School Boards Association. They look at our total cost per pupil excluding the charter tuition and the charter kids. The yellow line here is the average for the state. The blue line is our school district, and the green line is that peer group, the school districts I'm talking about, which is a little different than the peer group that we were working with before, but it's the school districts that are 10 closest in size to us, size and socioeconomic. So it's the Allentowns, Lancaster, Wilkes-Barre, Scranton, all those school districts. And if you look at our cost per pupil here, we, we were very close to the state average back in 2008. We started to slip below. This spike in 2012 is kind of an anomaly. That's when we had the sale leaseback of the buildings and we had a bond refunding, so there was some influx of revenue and expenditure that were one-time type things. But really, after that, you can see that our cost per pupil dipped well below both the state average and our peer group. And we've been pounding that drum here for the last two years. So you can see where we're at there. But if you take a look at our test scores, and this is a composite of all our PSSA scores and shows the percent proficient and advanced, the state average clearly is well above where we're at. But if you look at our peer group and where we are, when we were up closer to the state average as far as expenditures, we were slightly above this group. Over time, as we start to make the cuts, we, we didn't drop below. We fell right in line. So to me, I think that's a credit to our staff because we are, we are achieving the same results as our peer group across the state at far less money. So that at least is a positive there. And when you look at our Keystone's, which is the high school group, we are still, we're below the state average, but we are well above our peer group. So that is a positive there. And again, we're going to let Bob get on and talk about what we need to do up at Erie High this, this coming year. But after that, we'd like to talk about, because we do have a great opportunity here. We, for the first time in eight to 10 years, we don't have to worry about keeping the doors open every year. We have a little room to start focusing on student achievement and education, and we need to really talk about what we want to add back and what's going to have the most impact, the most bang for the buck as far as student achievement over the next couple of years. And just to drill down a little bit, I, just two more quick slides. This breaks out our PSSA scores for math, English, language arts, and science. And again, you can see with the math, we're right in line with that peer group. Our English, language arts, and we are aware of this, for the last two years, actually slipped below the peer group. And that's the reason why that is our big initiative this year. And it's really the key to all the test scores, because if we aren't teaching these kids to read and understand what's on the rest of the test, they aren't going to be able to score on them. So that's, that's our big initiative for this year, is to really start to focus on that and address that first. Science, again, we're right in line with, with our peer group. And if you look at the Keystone's, again, for math, we're well above our peer group, still below the state average. Our literature, and again, I think this really shows that we have to focus on that overall, is actually dipping down towards where the peer group is. And our science is, again, above average. So is there any questions on that piece?
Go ahead.
How many peers are in our peer group and who are some of them?
There's 10 of them. So that, what this program does is pick the 10 closest to us. So it's Wilkes-Barre, Scranton, Allentown, Lancaster, Harrisburg, those school districts that are about our size.
Yes.
Thank you. I hate to be negative, Nellie, but if our peer groups are underperforming, we can't take credit for being equal to underperforming school districts. Get what I'm saying? If they're at a state average or, I don't know exactly how to put it, that, you know, if the 10 districts, nine districts are below what should be comprehension or proficiency, the fact that we are as lack in proficiency as the other nine school districts doesn't make me feel more comfortable. You know what I mean?
I guess my, I guess my point, I'm not saying that that is where we need to be, Bob, certainly, but we, we were able to achieve the same results as they are at $1,000 less per pupil. So we have, we have less resources available to us and they're still able to achieve that. So, so I guess when I look at this, now that we have this opportunity, that we've received this $14 million, there's no excuses for us. We have to perform above that peer group, because if we don't show results and they gave us this money and our cost per pupil comes in line with the peer group and we don't see a tick above that as far as our results, then that could be viewed as a waste of money. So that's why we have to be very, I guess, very strategic in thinking about how we're going to invest those dollars over the next couple of years, so that we do show the results.
Mr. President? Yes. The question, the question I'd like to ask is, I mean, just when she was giving, when she was giving that presentation, she said, "Some of us are visual," you said. You know what I mean? And that's true, that there's different learning styles for people, that some are audible, some are hands-on, some are, some are visual. So when we're evaluating these students at this point, are we going to be able to like, make that determination as long as we can identify the students? Because sometimes the students may not be doing well because they're being taught in a way that they're not comprehending, and then they get tested anxious because they didn't, they didn't quite catch it the right way. So is that, is that a direction we're going to try to evaluate the learning styles of the children and then move forward with those evaluations of each kid?
That's one of the things, I think, as he and I met with the principals and Diane starting to talk to the staff that we're in dire need of, and that's differentiated instruction materials. We do not have that in our current curriculum. So that, and that's something I think is...
Well, I remember we were headed in that direction at one point, but then the testing kind of put that all on hold, because what we had to pass, they have to know what's going to be on that test. And so it was like, we're going to teach them the way we've always taught them, we're just going to keep going and keep doing it that way. Well, the reality of it, from the numbers that, that, you know, we're looking at, it's not, it's not the same old, the same old scenario. If we don't think outside of the box, they're pretty much going to stay in these kind of things, whether we have the money. I mean, I understand that you, you need, you need money to be able to implement some of the things that would affect these things. But if we start, if we don't, if we don't think outside of the box a little bit as far as trying to, you know, going after the learning styles and stuff, I think that that's a very, very important focus. So that's all, that's all.
And the focus between Diane Sutton and Ken Nixon, I think those are two key players in the administrative staff to work on, trying to get consistency across the board in their teaching and learning practices. And then looking at the achievement gap. We have some gaps that we have to look at and how are we teaching students, and that's with the differentiation. And making sure that we're getting, reaching our students and getting them an opportunity to learn to the best of their abilities.
Yes.
Thank you, Harrison. By the time a student gets to fourth grade, if he or she is deficient, we have a real good chance of losing them already. Are we doing anything in first grade or second grade to pick out these kids that are deficient and give them that help that they need?
We have an intervention program that we're using in, Nora, K 1, 2 this year?
Correct. Level of literacy intervention.
So yes, absolutely. But again, we're going to, we're going to put a lot of effort into our literacy in primary for pre-K, 1, 2, and 3. Because that is a big push. And then our community schools also are looking at up to third grade, that they need to be able to read in third grade. So they're giving us some supports as well in our, in our community schools.
That's why I was a bit surprised with the, the fourth grade testing. To me, in a way, it might have been too late. That's why we had all that red for Paulette's name here. That was, that's my concern. Thank you.
Take a break from this and go to Bob.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. We have Bob Mars here tonight. We have the bids, bids back on the, the final work that needs to be done as far as the remediation work up at Erie High, so he's going to share that information with us.
Okay. Good evening. As Brian mentioned, we did receive bids on Thursday for the final phase of the fire remediation. If you recall, the last phase, we brought in new steel, we poured some concrete, and we put a roof on. So all the heavy work was in place before the students came back to school. So now this phase that we received bids on is more interior build-out. We do need to put a facade on that area of horticulture and right above it where the fire was the most intense. So that includes that. And it also includes a handicap lift. Many of you who are familiar with Erie High School, there's about a four-foot elevation change when you come into that wing where these spaces are on the first floor. So the handicap lift that would be able to take a handicapped child down four feet and then to get access to the rest of the wing. We did receive bids. General construction, E.E. Austin was low bidder, and their number was 645,700. Mechanical construction was Scobell, 451,500, or 657. And electrical was Churchill Murdoch, 230,325. The total of all three of those prime contracts is 1,327,682. The budget, we're renovating approximately about 15,500 square feet. Typically, for projects like this, we allocate about $100 per square foot for renovations. So that would put the budget somewhere about 1.5 million. So our total came in, in that analysis at 1.3 million. We did receive four bids in the general construction category, three bids in the mechanical category, and two bids in the electrical category. So at this point, we'll send the, the low bidders a notice of intent to award, and then when the board takes action on that, we can get their bonds, insurances, and contracts and get them on board. Any questions?
This is still money from the insurance company?
Yes. And we sent all the documents to the insurance company, and I think the preliminary report was a, sort of agreed with all the work we had shown and I think even the price they may have commented on. So I'm not sure we'll have any issues there with the insurance. So, not sure we'll have any issues there with the insurance company.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Bob. Okay. So, you know, as we spoke earlier, we have a lot of work to do as far as our, our test scores and student achievement. But with 14 million, I really feel that we've given, been given this unique opportunity to really show that, that public education does work and that we can, with this assistance, move these students forward. So I think it's a perfect time for us as a district, and we're starting to do this. You've been seeing a lot more curricular items here at the board level. Mr. Patrungar is going to talk about having a retreat here in November. We'd like to dig deeper into this, this data and really start to have a discussion about where we are right now and where we want to be in, in five to 10 years and, and start talking about, as a board and, and a staff and a, and a community, what we need to do. What, what do we need, what action steps do we need to take? What programs do we need to add back that are going to help move our kids forward? So before we get into that piece, I thought it would be good just to kind of go over where we are with the finances and what the $14 million will or won't do for us. So you're all familiar with this spreadsheet. This is the, this is our actual expenditures for '15, '16, are projected for '16, '17, and the, the five-year projections that PFM created for us this past spring. And again, this is before the consolidation and before the 14 million. It does, it does include a half percent increase in the real estate taxes each year. And with that, you can see that where we started out this spring was, you know, a deficit position. Everything here, as far as our surplus or deficit, was in red and our fund balance was negative. So what this told us was that if nothing changed by 2021, 2022, that we would have a $19 million structural deficit and our fund balance would be negative $75 million, which is not possible. We know that. If, if this would have continued on the same path, again, when our fund balance started to reach the negative 12 to $24 million range here in '17, '18, '19, that's the point where we would not have been able to pay our bills or make our payroll. So with all that, we, we did move ahead with the consolidation this past year. And as a result, we, we saved for the '17, '18 school year about $4.3 million. And the savings for that consolidation is projected to reach about $6.6 million by 2021, '22. But that's still left, when you go out to '21, '22, a negative or a deficit of $12 million. So this was kind of the point we were at the spring when we passed our budget and we, we felt we had done everything we could locally to, to really right the ship. And now with the 14 million being recurring, you can see what, what our finances look like as is. This is not changing any programming at all, not adding anything back, not doing any type of renovations to any of our buildings. And with that, you can see that with the half percent increase, we actually have a little bit of a surplus moving forward. So that.
That 14 million, that's, you're using that as a flat base.
Right.
With the increase in basic education funding annually, assuming that is a 1% or 2%, that's going to increase that 14 million.
That will increase. You're right. I do not have that in there. So that, that would add another 2% to 3% on the 14 million.
Right.
So that would be helpful.
So that would at least leave us with a surplus.
Right.
An increase in surplus.
So we know we have a lot of needs and, you know, we talked about where our scores are, we're well aware of all the issues with our buildings. As it stands right now, what, what the 14 million will do for '17, '18, will clean up our negative fund balance and move it into a positive territory. That is something that hasn't happened in a number of years. This, with this money, this is the first time, I think, in eight to 10 years that we're going to have a positive fund balance and we're going to be able to pay our bills on time and will not need to take an advance on our subsidy or do a tax revenue anticipation note. So that's all very good news for us. And the fund balance, as far as $6 million, that's, that's very welcome news, but I do want to point out that our, at our size with a $190 million budget, we should have about $18 million in our fund balance. That's about one month worth of expenses. So that's still below the, where, where it's recommended. But, but again, with that type of base, we will be able to pay all our bills on time right now. So if you recall, when we, we submitted our financial plan back in January, we had requested a $31 million increase in subsidy and had a series of items in it that, that we had requested. And I, I have most of those in here, so I wanted to start plugging these in to show you what, what our budget would look like with some of those items added back in. So the first thing that, that we know we need is a curriculum replacement cycle. We don't have the vehicle right now to refresh our curriculum, and it's recommended that that happens every seven years. So if we were able to implement that type of cycle, it would cost us about $660,000 a year. So that would be something that, that we would probably want to look at getting back. Our technology, right now, we purchase all of our technology equipment through grants. We don't really have a significant budget line in place for replacements, certainly not anything that will ensure that when our technology becomes obsolete, that, that would be four to five years for the laptops and desktop-type units and eight years for our network equipment. If we were to implement a cycle that ensured that would happen, it would cost us about $1.3 million a year. So that, if we added that back, you can see that as far as our surplus or deficit and our fund balance goes, we're starting, especially if you look at this surplus, we're getting to the point where we're more breakeven, where revenues equal our expenses. But we still haven't done anything to address our, our building issues. So as part of the, the recovery plan, again, we, we had worked with McKissick and Associates, and they, they felt that $244 million in projects over the next several years would, would really bring our buildings up to where they need to be as far as operational and educationally for, for the current day. So having that in there, again, it would start off with about a $3 million increase in our debt service, but by 2021, '22, again, this would address all our building needs throughout the district. That debt service would increase to $13 million. So, so again, if you look at all these items that we did include in that original plan, if we were to implement all of them, we would be back into a negative situation. So, so again, this is very welcome news as far as the $14 million, but we, we have a very limited range of items that we can add back. So we're, we're going to have to be very strategic about how we do that and really have some, some good discussions in the district and in the community about what we feel we need to move our kids forward and, and really identify those and target those areas. If I turn all these off, one of the things that, that we were looking at this past fall was a $67 million project. And that was, that came with a $3 million debt service increase each year. And the $67 million really would allow us to address a lot of the needs we have up at, at Central High. The proposal we had at that point was to knock down the Roosevelt Wing and put an addition on for the magnets, which was priced at at about $50 million. That would still leave about $17 million for the rest of our building. So if we had that proposal in here, again, if you look at where we are surplus-deficit-wise, that pretty much takes us to breakeven. Is there any questions on that?
Sure.
I'm glad we're hearing this because I don't want to sound negative, but I get the impression that out in the community, there's a lot of armchair quarterbacks who think we're going to be awash in money because we're going to get $14 million that we didn't have. I just want to, going back to the 90s, the mid-'90s, when state politics began to deny public education and us specifically at times, millions of dollars. And then back in 2010, when Governor Corbett took office and there was an abrupt, dramatic change in the way schools were funded and there was, with smoke and mirrors over a two-year period, we lost $20 million. And we haven't caught up since. And to connect this to what Angela was saying, the students who've come through Erie Public Schools since 2010 are going to have been negatively affected by the denial of that money, at least to some extent. So Mr. Plato just said that when we had that $31 million figure, I'm reminded of, I want to remind everybody else, when we had those meetings and Jay was here, he said, we, we had to come up with a realistic figure to ask of the Department of Education that we could justify, that would put us on par with other peers, not just in Pennsylvania, but elsewhere. In other words, a justifiable request for where we should be. It was $31 million, and I recall hearing Jay say, "We could have asked a couple million more, but we didn't want to be accused of aiming too high or asking for the moon to hope to end up somewhere else." So fast forward, Dan Loflin gets elected, and God bless him, if he hadn't been, we wouldn't have the 14. But we, we, we would have been very justified in getting 31 or more. And I'm agreeing with the superintendent, we're not awash in cash because we have $14 million. And if somebody on the street tells us otherwise, we've got to be ready to answer that. I didn't mean that in a negative way, and I'm not ungrateful to Senator Loflin, I'm just saying it's a touch of realism, reality where we really are and where we, we've been abandoned and deprived, and now we're getting a measure of justice, but not enough, in my opinion, personally.
Bobby?
Thank you, sir. I've been talking to a lot of people who are in the city over the last four months, especially since that $14 million was kicked around, you know, "We're going to be fat to happy" and all that. Trying to explain that that's really not the case. However, they're saying, "Oh, boy." And this is pretty much a, a universal thought, that if we get $14 million, we at damwell better be putting some monies aside for reserves, specific reserves, whether it be for construction or curriculum or whatever, that, you know, the $14 million, you know, again, it's been questionable whether it's going to be perpetual or just a one-time shot in the arm. And they're saying that, "Hey, I don't want to hear anything about deficit spending or having the cut. You've got $14 million." And in an average person's eye, $14 million is powerball. You know what I mean? So what we need to do, and I think we'll discuss that at this special get-together, the board retreat, on how it should be spent, a portion of it, and what should be specifically allocated for unanticipated or anticipated expenses down the road. You know, I, I have to agree with them, you know. Taxpayers are looking at, okay, which pocket is this coming up? Is this coming out of my real estate tax pocket or my state tax pocket? And either way, they're looking at it as their pain. So, you know, we have to, I think, be responsible, yet, you know, we do need to have forward thinking, but we just can't think this and say, you know, hopefully next year we'll get another increase or this or that. So my attitude is, you know, we need to have a controlled increase in, in expenses with a certain percentage or dollar amount or some way of setting aside an allocated reserve so that we can move forward in a progressive fashion, yet not put ourselves in a position that if whatever comes up, we'll have the reserves to be able to pay without having to go in and pass another bond issue to the governor. So, you know, controlled spending, that's what I, what I advocate. Thank you.
Thank you.
So really, I guess, and my, my point in all this is we're not going to be able to do everything we want to do with the district. So if we're going to show results, and I strongly feel we need to, we need to prove that this investment was a wise investment by the legislature, we, we really have to take a step back and take a look at what our, where our data is, what, what investment we can put into this district, whether it be curriculum, technology, building, or a combination of those that will drive the best results moving forward for our students. So before we get into, to talking about that future, I'd like to take a couple minutes and talk about the strings that are attached to this money. We have been talking about that over the, the last couple of months. They, as part of the school code revision this year, which we are hearing as, as latest today, that the governor is going to let's pass into, let's, or pass into law, thanks to him. This, it will include this financial watch, which is 694A. And if you recall, we are under, right now, 694A. Last year, they created a special section of financial watch specifically for the Erie School District, which was a result of the $4 million and required us to develop the plan, which we submitted and was summarily rejected here last spring. 695A is this new level financial watch that, again, is created specifically, specifically for us. And we've been told by our legislators, we've been told by our lobbyists, that this is not intended to be punitive for the Erie School District, that the legislation was really designed around our experience and designed to help other school districts that haven't made the tough decisions that we've made, make those decisions with some assistance from a financial administrator from the state. However, we are going to be under this financial watch status. And as a result, we are going to be appointed a financial administrator. That, that individual will be appointed by the governor from a list of three names that are submitted to the president pro temp of the Senate, which is Senator Scarnotti. And that will happen within 30 days of us receiving educational access funding. That's the $14 million for this year. We have not received that money yet. We, I've actually been in contact with PDE today, we've been emailing back and forth. The director of finance down there told me that she is checking, but is being told that it will come, but they're not sure when. So as soon as, as we do receive a first installment on that $14 million, then that 30 days starts ticking and the Senate pro temp has to submit some, some names to the governor's office. So, so again, we're, we're hopeful that the individuals that, that are submitted, and we're hoping that we do have some input into who those might be, we're hoping that it'll be somebody that is from the region and really understands all we've been through and the struggles we've been through and what we've done here over the last couple of years. But the qualifications are somebody that has experience in business administration, budget development, or fiscal management, and facilities management. And it is not going to be an employee of the district, it's going to be an employee of the Commonwealth and paid by the Department of Education, so this will not come out of our budget. We're also understanding that everybody is considering this a full-time position, so this individual will be here on a daily basis working with the administration. The duties, the individual will be responsible, will have complete access to our finances, may engage in independent audits, which we have had five or six independent audits over the last several years saying the same thing. So again, as, as we're going through this and you think about what the requirements are of this financial watch status and what we've done, we've done most of these things The administrator can utilize PDE expertise or hire technical staff, and technical staff is public financial management. So, so again, we have been working very closely with the Department of Ed and their, their curricular people as well as PFM for the financial side. So all that work has really for us been, been done already. And their goal is to develop a financial improvement plan that is done in consultation with the secretary. with the secretary of ed. And again, I, we've talked about this in the past, our big concern out of this legislation is this is all developed without input from the administration, the school board, staff or community. So this is all done independent of us. So again, we're hopeful that whoever comes here will be understanding of what we've done and be willing to work with us to develop a plan that we're comfortable with. So the requirements of the plan, it's going to have performance goals, benchmarks and timetables for us to improve our finances, cash flow analysis, which we have done several of those over the last couple of years and submitted them to the department, five-year budget projections, current operation, and including measures in the plan, which again is already done, this was done by PFM. So worst-case scenario, these numbers will just be refreshed by PFM here once the financial administrator is on board. This one, I know everybody in this room is excited about the 10 hours of financial training for board members, although I think all of you can probably teach those courses at this point. Financial improvement plan also includes facility maintenance and improvements, so, you know, that's something that we've been working through and working with our architects as well as the consultants that PFM has provided. And the plan, there's no timeline as far as when the plan must be submitted, but the secretary must approve it within, approve or disapprove within 45 days of receiving it.
Who and how are those performance goals and benchmarks going to be developed? Who's going to, how's the, what's the process? Is that what the administrator will do with the Department of Education?
Yes, yes.
Charles?
I have a couple of questions. One, if we say there's 15 checkmarks, you get all 15 done in the first six months, good to go, because he leave, one, he or she leave. And two, who pays for his, is that coming out of our $14 million or is that?
No, it was right there. It's a PDE.
Yeah, that's really our plan, I'll get to that in a minute. I think, you know, when you, when you look at the requirements to get out and where we are with the $14 million, I think that we could be able to petition to get out of this in a year or two.
Then if we're unsatisfied with this guy, we'll say this guy's just, he's not good at his job.
You got no say.
In essence, what you're saying, we put together our financial plan, we've done a lot of the things that he's, is being charged with doing, so he may come in and he's going to do it again separately?
We, I guess, my take on this is I, I think all this work has been done, this individual's going to be working with PFM, who is already intimately aware of our finances.
They have all the numbers and the factors that we dealt with before.
Yeah, they've given us a number of recommendations, which we have already started to implement, like the consolidation of copier purchases. So my, my hope and belief is that once we have this administrator on board, they're going to take the work that we've already done and really package that into a new plan. You know, maybe we'll have a couple of new items in there that hopefully will save some money. I, you know, we talked to the administrators earlier today, I still, I still believe that, you know, now that, you know, we're moving away from some of this big stuff, we'll be able to dig into some of the smaller areas and really find ways to save, you know, maybe a million or two on an annual basis that really won't affect educational programming, it'll just be more efficiencies as far as the operational side. So, you know, hopefully we'll be able to build all those things in and...
So, I mean, just to get a feel for this, so in other words, we're going to, the guy's going to come in hired by the state, all right, and he's going to evaluate the situation, he'll be working with you, but will we have any contact with him in any way, shape or form during his process?
It's our hope that this, he or she will do that, but theoretically, according to this, they don't have to work with me, they don't have to work with the administration, you, anybody, they can just design.
So then they, so that's, okay, so then they, whether they do it independently or work with you or whatever, they come back with a plan, they present it to us, and our decision-making is what, yes or no on the plan, or, I mean?
Next slide or two.
Okay, I'm sorry. Jump ahead.
So again, I guess I, I want to point out too, as we think about how we're being told this isn't punitive for the Erie School District, the plan addresses accounting and automation procedures, which you know that that, when I came in as CFO, that was one of my number one goals, and we have come a long way. I think, you know, you saw the new financial reports that we're providing you that are timely and accurate, we've done a lot behind the scenes and continue to automate our accounting procedures. Permanent staffing levels, again, we have done that through the consolidation, we feel pretty solid with where we're at. Again, I think there's some opportunities to add some things back, but again, that's something that we have to have a discussion with in the broader scope of what we can afford through, with our budget. Performance goals, administrative staff must meet for contract renewal, that is specifically for ME&amp;B. So this individual will put performance goals in this plan that we will have to meet in order for you to renew our contract. So that, you know, clearly is a concern of ours, we're hoping that somebody will come in and give us something reasonable to work towards. They can change district policy. The last two here though, these are things that we've done, are in the process of doing right now. And those are the biggest things where a district can save money, and that's the sale, lease disposition of our assets, the board just approved at the last meeting, the bids, the public bids for the five buildings that we have left on our books that we're not utilizing as schools. And then the consolidation of school buildings, programming and other services, we went through that just a couple of months ago. And then last one is greater use of IU programs, I, you know, I think that's something we'll continue to evaluate. We, it's a recommendation that PDE has, and we have been utilizing their services here, I think, pretty, pretty well over the last couple of months. So again, with the implementation, Mr. Fabrizi, this is where it's at. They, it basically says that once the plan is approved by the Department of Education, that the board is required to revise the district budget and policies and any future budgets and create policies that adhere to this new financial plan. The financial administrator again can make revisions to the plan at any time, but they have to have the approval of secretary of ed, so it can be a living document for them. But the bottom one here is really the issue that I think we're all a little concerned about is if the board chooses not to implement the plan, really the financial administrator's, as far, again, just limited to finances, is able to assume the board's authority and make sure that plan gets done. And the last section there, except for the authority to levy taxes, again, that is a late addition that was added in the House. I know we were concerned about that early on, so we're very pleased that that did make it into the final legislation because that really will restrict what that individual can do as far as the plan.
I'm going to ask one more question here. So let's say that, I mean, we have had things in the past where we've dealt with situations where companies come in and they want to privatize whatever services, services that we have within the district. But we've looked at, in fact, we gave one where then as time went on, we realized that what they were selling and what actually happened didn't come to fruition. So if he, if we have someone appointed comes in and says, well, we think you should do this, you should hire thi, I mean, are they going to give you, like, you should hire this specific company for this and that specific company for this and that kind of thing? Because if they do, I mean, is that what they're, is that what they're able to do as far as when they implement, when they say the plan, that they can say, well, we think you should employ this company to take care of these services and you should employ this company for these services? Because there could be some abuse of power in that kind of a situation, that's all I'm saying.
I would guess, I'll defer to our solicitor, but I would guess that they would be able to recommend certain paths, like, you know, you mentioned outsourcing, that we would want to do that, but they would still have to follow whatever the school code says as far as picking an individual, so that would require a process.
Agreed.
Okay, so again, to get out of financial watch, the legislation says that we, we as a district have to demonstrate the ability to maintain a structurally balanced budget. And that, that is done by the financial administrator in consultation with the secretary of ed. Again, I think when you go back to this spreadsheet and you take a look at where we are right now with the $14 million, I believe that today we can demonstrate that we can have a structurally balanced budget. But I, more than likely, and why I say it's going to take a year is because I think that we are going to need to get through a one-year cycle so that at the end of 2017, 18, when our audited financial statements come out, which will come out about this time next year, we can show that we have a solid positive fund balance and that the projections show that we will be able to maintain it. So that, at that point, my take is regardless of what the financial administrator says, I would look to petition the board at that, the Department of Education at that point to be removed from financial watch.
They're taking the guy's job away, in other words. That's going to be easy. Better get somebody old.
Is there any questions on that piece so far? Okay, so, so we've talked a lot about our educational needs tonight and our operational needs, and I just want to point out as we've, we went through that, that plan does not address any of those needs. It doesn't talk about educational programming, staffing levels for teachers, anything like that. 694A did, the department specifically told us that we should be looking at those type of items, this doesn't do that. So when I look at our numbers and we went through this tonight, we have some huge challenges, especially on the student achievement side. You look at our, you know, low student achievement scores, we have a big achievement gap between all our kids and some of our subgroups, our graduation rate again is at 79%, which is low, and we all know we have some major deferred building maintenance that needs to be addressed in the short term. So there's a lot of challenges here that we need to address, and we know, given our finances, that we do have some room to start adding back some programming and do some things with our building, but it's very, very narrow. So what I would like to propose tonight is that we, we consider doing a full-blown formal strategic plan that really addresses those educational and operational needs and more or less wraps around the financial plan. And I see this as if we get a financial administrator that we're not comfortable with or is not going in the direction we want, gives us a voice in this process. So I would look to develop a strategic plan that was very, with a process, very similar to what we did when we did the consolidation this last year, really take a deep dive into our data, look at where we're at, come up with some different action plans and items that we need to do to really move this district forward and really identify those four or five goals that we need to get to, measurable goals, so we can look at our achievement and say, we're going to take our PSSA scores and move them from here to here in this number of years. This is what we're going to implement to do that, this is the timeline, and most importantly for that financial plan, this is the budget. So that, those pieces, as we're working through that, will be able to be wrapped into our financial plan. And I would like to do this in a very, again, public process, really would like to start off reviewing the data, gathering the information, but just like we did with the consolidation plan, start to take this out to the community, start to talk to people about where we are, share our information, share our ideas on how we can move our students forward and get some feedback. And once we do that, we really can develop a plan that is backed by the staff, the board and the community and look to adopt that. And for me, that, that's going to be very hard to ignore, because if we have the support of everybody here in this community with some of the things that we like to do, it's going to be hard for that to be excluded from the financial plan. So that's what we would like to move forward on. We've talked back and forth as administrative team about how to do that, and there are several companies, several consultants out there that are very good at developing these strategic plans. We feel it would be, because this is such an important piece and this is such a great opportunity for us, that it would be important to have somebody help us facilitate that, actually have a call into the Department of Education. They have worked with some of those consultants in the past, I'm hoping to get a couple of recommendations from them and get their blessing to move ahead with this so that we are, again, working with the department and doing this in conjunction with them and the financial administrator. And we've already, I know price is always a big concern when we talk about consultants, but Dari has already reached out to a couple of our community partners and we're actually looking for different opportunities to fund that. So if the board is comfortable with it, we would like to at least start investigating a couple of different companies and maybe bring one or two to the board in the next meeting or two to discuss.
Do you want me to take a short poll here?
Sure.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a word of caution. I, I agree with you, but whoever this administrator is going to be, we don't want to appear as though we're going to circumvent their duties or authority by us going and reaching out to the public for hearings and us doing what we feel is right. Doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be working in conjunction with whoever this new boss is going to be. So I, you know, we may want to just not put it on the back burner, leave it at the forethought, but we also need to find out who it is that's coming in and what their thought process is. Work in conjunction with them to achieve an endorsement versus, you know, trying to, you know, appearing adversary.
That's why I'm contacting the Department of Ed to get their advice and blessing on this type of approach. We'll leave it at that.
Only one other question about the, about the financial administrator. I didn't look and see when it said the qualifications, but any educational background involved in this in any way, shape or form? I mean, so the, so the person in charge could have absolutely no, no educational backg, I mean, a background in education?
This, this is what's in law, that...
Business administration, budget development and fiscal management, at least.
I would hope the governor would consider that when he's making the appointment, that it's somebody that works within a school district or understands that what we're about and what we do rather than having a businessman come in and tell us it's not a business, that it's not a business. That's all I got to say. I don't know.
We have been, we have been in constant contact with the Department of Education and I think they will have a lot of say in this since the governor is the one that's going to appoint this individual and they, I can say with 100% confidence that they understand our situation, they understand that we have done everything we can locally, and I believe that they are going to be willing to work with us.
Did you pull all of us, because I can't wait, I'm still enthusiastic, yes to what the superintendent's asking.
No, I haven't pulled you yet.
Okay, well, we're going to do, please do, please don't miss me.
No, I won't. Although Bobby laughed, so. Yes, that's fine. Yes. On what he talked about, because looking to get, wanting to revise it again?
I guess I didn't even know what I'm saying, yes or no.
All right, well, hold on, explain it again.
On what he talked about, because looking to get, wanting to revise it again?
I guess I don't even know what I'm saying, it's important.
All right, well, hold on, explain it again, right?
We want to implement a strategic plan that really-
Yes, yes.
Yeah, addresses the educational piece, not just the finance.
Absolutely, we need to quick, anything else? And the financial administrator need not feel that you're being punitive by doing so.
No, no, it's our hope to work.
I'm being sarcastic, that's what they're telling us, that he's, he's not punishing us.
Go ahead.
I think so.
Mayor?
Yes?
Do you agree with that?
Yes.
I don't think anybody knew you were on the line anyways. You've been so quiet.
I have a, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
To the president.
Go ahead.
Okay, doesn't refer to the conversation that you just had, it refers to the peer groups when you were talking about reading and the math issues?
Okay.
Can I ask that question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I come back and ask that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can barely hear you. Are you there?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay. When you refer to the peer districts, is it based on size of district, or do they take into consideration other issues, like the poverty rate, ELL population, the lack of technology and books in our classrooms, the absentee rate, relocation of families within the district on a regular basis, the lack of senior teachers, because we've had to give incentives over the years, and the amount of new teachers? And, you know, just basically, all of this, all of these issues that create issues within the school district and children not being able to, to read or, or move forward. I mean, are those districts the same as our district, or is it simply based on size?
The peer group-
I can't hear you.
The peer group is, when I do this sort, is based specifically on size, but when, when it comes up, because all those school districts are cities, are medium-sized cities, similar to ours, the socioeconomics are almost the same. I just pulled it up, and I can send you some more information on it, Mary, but the free and reduced lunch percentages, everybody, just like us, are 80% and above. So, so those school districts have a very similar population than we do. The only, the only real big difference is that our, our funding and our cost per pupil are significantly lower than theirs.
And that makes a big difference, does it not?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would say so.
Mr. Petringer, I'll have to get off the phone now, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mayor.
Bye.
Bye. Okay. I think you had your answer.
Thank you.
We'll move on to new business, anybody have anything on new business? Not, we do have to, before we, any other matter, but we do have to have an executive session for legal negotiations and personal matters. Personnel matters, not personnel. But any other matter before recess for 10 minutes, and we'll move it over to conference room three. If not, we'll recess for 10 and move it over.